Get started. Everyone could please. Good afternoon. This is a city council. Maverick County Commissioners Court. Eagle Pass Independent School District Board of Trustees. Eagle Pass Waterworks System Board of Trustees. Maverick County Hospital District Board of Trustees. We also have the Kickapoo Tribe of Texas. Here present at this special meeting. Today is Thursday, July 27, 2023. It is 2:12 PM. And we are here at the International Center for Trade. We will begin with the establishment of quorum. If any entity has a quorum, please, if you can just present that quorum. We do have a quorum with the City of Eagle Pass. Present, we have Councilman Garcia. Councilman Elias Diaz. Mayor Pro Tem Davis and myself, Mayor Salinas. With the county judge, do you all have a quorum as well? Yes, yes. Individually.
Very well. Do you proceed?
Yes.
Very well. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the Maverick County Commissioners Court meeting jointly, as mentioned by the mayor alongside with all of the other governing entities that are present today for this joint special workshop Thursday, July 27, 2023, at 2:12 PM. There has been an establishment of quorum with all members of the Commissioners Court present, for the exception of Commissioner Jerry Morales.
Thank you, Judge. Any other entity that wishes to open up? Mr. Barrera? Excellent. Okay. We also have representatives of Sol Ross University. Thank you so much for being here. We will move on to moment of reverence. We always like to pay respects to our military, people that are serving here in the US and abroad. So if we could please take a moment to show respect for them, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Moving on to citizens, communications, and recognitions. We do have Mr. Jesse Fuentes. How you doing, sir?
How you doing?
Good afternoon. You have the floor and. Thank you, Representative.
Hello. Greetings, everyone. My name is Jesse Fuentes. I'm with local small business, Epi's canoe and kayak team. And thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council and distinguished guests. I'm going to take up two or three minutes of your time.
Yes, sir.
Basically, I'm here as an advocate for the Rio Grande River. My small business has been operating on it for the last eight years. And here lately, the Rio Grande River is suffering. There's islands that have been bulldozed, sanctuaries that have been destroyed, and new roadways. And just, it's in a critical situation. And since I've grown up here and raised my kids here, and my parents did the same thing, I value the river. And I want to just tell you a little bit, if you could help us out in any way. There's an organization called the Eagle Pass Border Alliance that's been helping. And there's another organization called the Rio Grande International Study Center that's helping us try to bring attention to this plight. Now, if you would have told me that two or three weeks ago, I'd be talking to every national media outlet or people from all across the world. I would have said, wow. That's my situation. People are concerned what's happening here in Eagle Pass. I am, and I'm here just to tell you a little bit about it in a sense that my job is to promote positivity, to promote our community, to make sure that our culture is respected, to make sure that environmental ecosystems are protected. And I'm here before you because I see you as the most talented and gifted minds of our community and our region. And I wanted to spend some time just to say that next week, next Tuesday, we're going to have national media descend here in Eagle Pass. And I think they're tired of talking to me. So I would like to extend an invitation to you. If you're interested, if you'd like to visit with us, if you'd like to visit with some of the national media, because they're looking to see how our leaders are feeling about the situation that's happening to the river. And for me, it's not political, it's personal. And I love that river. I was raised a couple of blocks from it, and I want to protect it. And I am thankful that we have individuals like yourself here that are doing a heck of a job in promoting a four-year education facility. And that is so beautiful. But one thing that I'll leave you with is that as the river flows, so our story goes. We have to take care of the only water source that we have in our community. And what I see happening to it, it really hurts me personally. I just want to make sure that the river is respected. It's federally protected, and there's so many treaties that protect it. And they should be observed. And that's why I'm here to see if, just like I said, we'd like to invite you. Next Tuesday, there's going to be a lot of people in town. And if you'd like to come up and say a few words or visit. I know we're going to have a flotilla on the river, and we're going to visit the newly installed buoys. And we're going to observe them like nobody's observed them before. And if you can, you know, provide some positive input, we'd love to have you. I thank you for your time. You're doing an amazing job. And know that we are here to protect our story, our river, our culture, our history. And I just wanted to thank you for the job that each organization here or each representative does for our community. So thank you for your time. I appreciate you, and God bless you all.
Thank you.
The location for the flotilla will be on the Rio Grande. We're going to float from Shelby Park. If I'm granted access, and I'm working on that today. But we're going to float from Shelby Park all the way to the Urina property, where the heavenly pecan orchard is at, where the buoys have been laid in the center of the river. And like I said, nobody has gone up to them. Well, we are. I've invited 20 kayaks and one canoe, which will be our main expedition canoe. And 10 of those kayaks will be journalists from all across the nation. And 10 is open for invitation. If you'd like to join us, if you've never been out on the river, I'd like for you to see what I've seen on the river and what's happening on the river. So it's an invitation. And I thank you for your time once again. Appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. Before we get to the workshop and item one, I'd like to call on Mr. Mark Rodriguez. If he could give us a legislative update.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good to be here again, good to be before council the other day. I think my comments this afternoon have to do with the following. I've got to carve out two days and just come down and begin meetings by the following issues. Right? That's, I think, the way to best handle it. The goal and objective would be address the community agenda that was successful this past session. But also to prepare our grant applications and funding applications. And we kind of work with Representative Eddie Morales's office. We give them a better case to make, as he represents us also in Austin, Texas. For example, $37 billion in new transportation money, $32 billion for highway funding. We now know how to act with the Unified Transportation Program to address our local needs. That's a one-hour meeting right there, just specifically on that. We've got $95 million in funding for general aviation, for the state's general aviation airports. We have to go after some of that money for the airport here. We have environmental issues, and specifically TCQ is a great large agency. But the bad news is it's a great large agency, and we have some specific needs here. We'll have to carve out that time, for example, with the county commissioner, and address some of those issues. Broadband development has more money than my dear Lord. It has $1.5 billion to also work with the $3 billion from federal funding. We have to have a specific meeting on that. As an underserved community in broadband, how are we eligible? And how do we forward that funding request as a community? Education, we could keep on talking about. There will be a special session on education. It'll be the third special session of this year, probably either September or October timeframe. The representative can talk about the chances or not having chances of HB 1960, you know, being added to that special session. But a special session agenda is set by the governor of the state of Texas. The preliminary report and just opinion is that it may include vouchers, and it may include retirement teacher funding. That does not mean a community cannot ask to be added to the special session. So, for example, that's coming up. HB 28 was a specific success from Representative Morales's office. And Eagle Pass was added to that bill on the hotel motel tax portion to be eligible. The quick view on economic development is we now are part of HB 5, the Economic Development Program that was reenacted as per the legislature. And the community qualifies, specific meeting. So now I've already set myself up for five separate meetings, therefore I said two days. The waterwork system, I was just talking to Mr. Barrera. We could meet on two full days, just on the new money for waterworks and water infrastructure. The best thing this community can do is be supportive of that constitutional amendment that should be in the next election. And therefore, we also create goodwill for the community. And lastly, border security, border security, and border security. Due to some of the goodwill that has been developed between the mayor and the governor's office, it behooves us to ask for some of those reimbursement costs regarding the community. I'll stop there, answer any questions, and happy to listen on the specific agenda item today. Thank you for calling on me.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mr. Rodriguez? That's a lot of money that's available. We have to make sure that we actually get some. So we'll go ahead and open. Yes, please.
I'd like to, at this time, call to order the meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City of Eagle Pass Waterworks System. We now have a forum.
Excellent.
The presence of Mayor Salinas, the presence of Mr. Morris Lipton, and yours truly, Johnny Griesch. And we'd like to become a part of this special joint session.
Absolutely. Welcome, Morris.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and start the workshop. Item one, discussion and possible action on an update of the four-year university recruitment and renaming/rebranding. I think it would be appropriate to have Representative Morales maybe give a background on what happened at the legislature in regards to the four-year university? If that's okay?
I guess it's me.
Yes.
All right. So I'll know the difficulties that we had with HB 1960. You know, we were able to successfully pass it through the House, and then it died on the last day there on the Senate side, along with hundreds of other bills. You know, we stayed probably there three to four hours on the Senate chamber to see. And with the help of Senator Blanco from El Paso, he was, at some point during that day, you know, on the deadline, he was asked, put your two or three priorities for each senator. And Senator Blanco put that one and gave us that slot as the number one priority for his bills. And he had a bunch of other bills. He could have easily chosen some other bills. So for that, we need to be very thankful for the collaboration that we've had with Senator Blanco and being able to help us in that regard. We did face opposition, both on the House and on the Senate side, by Southwest Texas Junior College actually busing administration and students up there, which was very disappointing, because I think that I've been one of the biggest supporters, as well as the community, for Southwest Texas Junior College. And I had never been in a position where an institution of higher education has actually come out in opposition to a four-year university that would aid and would actually help the region in bringing higher education to the region. So that was unfortunate. We were able to address that, even though procedurally, we were, you know, and I don't want to go into specifics. I know that I've mentioned some of the council members and the mayor, some of the specifics as far as procedurally, how we had to bypass what happens over there on the House to be able to get onto the House floor to get to a vote, and I'm glad that we did. And so at this point, we find ourselves working in collaboration with the junior college moving forward. I want to be clear with those in our audience and with the elected officials so that you can spread this message to the rest of your constituents, as well as with the media, that we are not stopping. The 120 acres now, I believe, that Larry, Mr. Larry Levine and his family have been gracious enough to donate to the Texas State University system is in the works and in the final stages. And we also already have the $32 million dedicated, million dollars dedicated funds for the first standalone building that would go on that property. So we're moving forward. We know that we got our word cut for us, and we would like to be able to have that building before the end of 2025. And that's the reason for this meeting. We received a letter from the Texas State University system, both the county and the city, and I was provided a copy where it asked for, now that the Texas State University system, as well as Mr. Levine are in the final stages of the donation, they now need to have buy-in from the local community with respect to the infrastructure costs that are going to be incurred in making sure that all of the infrastructure is there in that 120-acre facility. We have received a proposed estimate, ballpark estimate, from Terratec with respect to the infrastructure costs associated with that. And at this point, I think the end goal for these entities that are present here today, and more specifically for the county and the city, is can you find the resources and the funding to be able to help the Texas State University system? And Mr. Levine, as a developer, to be able to bring this project to fruition. We can go into details, Mayor. If you know, I don't know, I want to take over somebody else's if they were going to give the more specific details as far as the cost figures. But it's between $9 and $10 million of infrastructure costs. And while the number may seem high, I think that working together, finding a solution, we can all, we are all going to be much better for this, you know, in the end. And hopefully then I'll leave it to your respective boards and the Commissioners Court, as well as the city council, to address this and go back and forth. And as far as, you know, what are some of the specifics? And we have representatives from Sol Ross, which are part of the Texas State University system here to answer any questions, as well as Mr. Levine that's here to answer any questions. And I also, you know, Mr. Lipton is here, who's part of Terratec also, who can answer any questions with the ballpark figures on the infrastructure costs. Thank you, Mayor.
Let me just say, Morris, we, thank you, Representative. We opened item one, but I'm going to go ahead and also open item two because they're related. All these, both items are regarding the schools. So item two is discussion and possible action on an update to support HB 1960, which is regarding the four-year university. And just so you all know, we don't have an order of speaker. So if anybody feels compelled and wants to give their opinion, please, just let me know, and we can all have a chance to discuss. Mr. Morris?
Thank you. Good afternoon to everybody. I apologize for being late. What I have to say is basically this. First of all, I want to thank everybody for being here. I think we started this some time back. Jorge Barrera had a great initiative, along with others of all the boards in Eagle Pass meeting jointly and actually opening a session, a meeting. In relation to the university and our four-year university and our downward expansion of Sol Ross, we do have a committee that, an initial committee that's working on it. We will expand that committee to include a lot, many of you that are here. I think it is something that we need to do. I am not happy with the situation with the junior college. I'll say it openly. I think there's others here that are not happy also. But I'm not going to dwell on that. I'm not going to worry about what Uvalde Junior College does. I think we need to worry about what we do. Let's worry about what we need to do to move this, to have us a four-year university as soon as possible. And I know it is complex. It's not easy. But we need to move forward. The situation about the road, access to the donated land, all of that. I think that, I think there's the willingness of both the county and the city to sit down and look at it. And it's like everything else, with everything else, funding is always a problem. But I think that we can come to a solution. What this four-year university will mean to Eagle Pass, I think many of us cannot fathom. It is opening up a completely different area of economic development and educational development in our community. And it will, I think we need to strive to bring it to reality as soon as possible. I know some people talk, Eddie talks now about the building being ready in 2025, and some people are talking about a five and a 10, and I don't know, maybe a 15-year period. Well, people, I don't have that long. You know, at my age. I would like to really move this thing along. So within the next five to seven years, we can have our own university in this community and this region. I think we need to keep in mind that I really am not happy about the stance of Uvalde Junior College. They say they've done a lot for us, and yes, they have. I am a product of that. You know, when I needed to go and get courses and everything else. But also, we've done a lot for the junior college. And we are the largest contributor to their enrollment. So we're not asking for anything. I just think that out of this meeting today, we need to come out, all of us united. I really don't want to hear how we can't do something. I want to hear how we can do it, and as soon as possible. And I know, I know there are situations there that are going to be difficult. But I think we can overcome all of that. And I do want to thank Eddie, the judge, the mayor, Mr. Levine for his donation and his family, and everybody here that is working toward making this a reality. So again, I want to thank everybody for being here, and I want to thank everybody for our unity.
Thank you, Morris. We have our Sol Ross representatives, Dr. Jorge Berndy.
Hi. Hello.
Okay. How you doing?
First of all, I have to say, somebody said that I had a lot of courage for wearing a tie. I didn't know what the dress code was going to be. But I understand with this triple-digit temperature I'm not used to.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't know, for some reason, all the Thai people are in one spot, corner. Well, my name is Bernie Cantons. I'm the provost and executive vice president. At first, I want to just say that Dr. Hernandez could not be here today, and so he sends his apologies. So I oversee, part of my job is oversee the faculty. We have about 192 faculty members, including adjuncts. We have about 90 tenure, tenure-track faculty at Sol Ross State University. What I'm going to say is, it pertains to the university in whole, not just RDC. But I think, I want to kind of give you an update of some of the things, because buildings are great, and, you know, and yesterday, we met with the master planner company who's doing the, I mean, it was actually very inspiring. I wish you could see what it's going to look like, you know, laid out. They gave us several options. And it just, it's quite impressive and inspiring to see something, you know, with 18 buildings, you know, 10,000 students. When you start having that kind of vision, you say, wow, that's absolutely amazing. And I don't know. Time is important, yes. I should also point out that the going to a four-year independent university is based not on time, but on enrollment. And so there are enrollment criteria that were set out at the beginning to move from an off-campus to a branch campus. That's the first. And we've already started working on that with SAC CLC, what's required. And then the next would be to move to an independent campus. So it would be a new independent university, separate from Sol Ross. That's the goal. That's the objective. But buildings without programs don't make any sense, and without students. So I want to tell you, you know, I arrived here last year, and I want to tell you some of the things that we've been doing. This includes in Alpine, we have been aggressively, we have to aggressively recruit faculty. We have to be competitive in recruiting good faculty. We have 12 new faculty members coming in next fall. We have, just so you have an idea, we have a new chair for the Education Department that will be taking over, coming from Baylor. So, I mean, we're trying to really recruit top caliber faculty. We have, we're searching for a new dean for the school of business here to grow the RDC school of business. As of right now, we have two degrees. We have a bachelor's in business administration and master's in business administration. Our intention is to, you know, allocate our resources properly. And business and health sciences are the two areas that the research has told us that we should sort of invest our resources. So our goal is to create accounting majors, that degrees in accounting, finance, management, marketing, international business. You know, if you don't have a menu of programs, it's difficult to keep students here. You have, you know, so we need to grow those programs. And some of the things we're doing at Sol Ross, just so you know, we created a school of health sciences. a school of health sciences to consolidate all the programs and bring them all together. So we have a nursing program. We have a new director for the nursing program, who starts now in the fall. We have the kinesiology program, and we have a new health science program that we're starting. All those programs will be, will fall under the School of Health Sciences, which, when, eventually, when they grow, we hope will become its own college of health science. We hope to do that as well here. Those are the two areas, and in, in here specifically, in the future, we hope to have engineering programs. The, I, one thing that I, two things. One is, you know, Sol Ross, I'm proud to be here. I'm proud to be part of Sol Ross. So, I don't know how many people know this, but we're 70% Hispanic. We're a Hispanic-serving institution. To be a Hispanic-serving institution, you have to have at least 25% enrollment of Hispanic origin. We're at 70%, so we are super Hispanic-serving. And in addition to that, we're low-income-serving first-generation colleges. We're, we're ranked 30th in, in the West Universities in, in performing for social mobility. That is, taking low, low-income, first-generation minority students and, and having them succeed. 30th in the West and 7th in Texas. And we're very proud of that, and I hope to be first. And so we've also hired a new Assistant Dean for, for Student Success, who will oversee. One of the creative things, you know, the president brought in the idea of having a faculty incentive-based faculty mentoring system for, so all new students, first-year students, will have a faculty mentor that will help them, you know, navigate through the college experience. So these are some of the things, I think it's important that people know that it's going on in the back. You know, when, when you talk about the downward expansion, we had our faculty work on all first-year and second-year courses. Those were ready to go. They were ready to go to the board to get approved. They were ready to go to the coordinating board to get approved, and it didn't happen. But on this side, we, we were ready to go. And the last thing I think, you know, that I would like to share with everyone, because a lot of people don't know this, we have, Sol Ross has about $43 million in grants that we've received over, in the last, probably three years. The last nine months, we've, we've received, been awarded close to $20 million in grants. $3 million of, there's a $3 million grant, Title V grant, that is specific to, to RDC, and, and I will, I'll defer here to Dr. Garza to talk about that, because that is, that $3 million is just to support our students here.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Doctor Cantones. As Doctor Cantones said, my name is Jorge Garza. I'm the Vice President here for Sol Ross State University, RDC. I am housed here in Eagle Pass. My office is here in Eagle Pass. I will tell you, I, I don't want to repeat everything that, or some things that Doctor Cantones has talked about, but when I was sitting yesterday, looking at the plans for our university at that location where Mr. Levine has actually donated to us, it was so exciting. It was so, so exciting to see all these buildings and understand that eventually, we will have a four-year university here. I was, it was something that was unreal, but at the same time, it was very real. And I really, really loved the situation, and I'm looking forward to that first building, because that will be a spark to everything else. So thank you for inviting us here. Doctor Cantones has talked about the $3 million grant that we received back in October. This was actually, well, before I say that, I have also only been here in this position for about a year and a half, myself. Yet, I am an alumni of Sol Ross State University in Alpine, and I am an alumni of RDC. So I love this university. There is nothing that, that will stand in my way to make sure that, that dream that Eagle Pass has had comes to, to be real, okay? And back in the summer, last summer, we got together with our grant writers, and we did have a understanding of what we wanted to do with this grant. It would, it was going to be the platform to the future of what we have here. And the actual grant, it's a Title V grant, but it's called the Culture of Care. And I think some of you have met the project director. His name is Joseph Olan. He is very, very involved in this grant. And the goal of this grant is exactly that, culture of care, making sure that we connect with the students and for them to have the ability and the resources that they need to get educated. Not necessarily our current students, but also the students that we are wanting to recruit. He has hired several people. One of them is the Director of Student Services. The other one is a retention specialist. The other one is a career specialist. And we are getting this platform ready so that we can figure out a way to make sure that when we recruit these students, they're ready to go out there to the community. I am very, very excited about that. The other thing that we are doing is making sure that we are connecting with the community. I can't specifically talk very in detail of what's going on, but I am so thankful for Eagle Pass School District that has connected with us in making sure that we are creating a partnership where their students are actually becoming our students. Eventually, whatever they're bringing up from their high schools, we want to make sure that we continue the, the road, the career path for our students, so that they can be with us instead of going somewhere else. I know, we all know, that not all the students will stay with us, but I am willing to bet, out of all the students that we're connected with Eagle Pass, if we can get 30% to 40% of those students to stay with us, which is very common, by the way, because I don't know what water, kind of water you guys have, but a lot of our students, top-level students, as a matter, as a matter of fact, your valedictorian from last year is one of our students. That is fantastic. I don't know what you guys are doing, but they stay with us. So that is the goal, creating the pathway from high school to us. There is a lot of students, I'm not going to mention the number, because that's not my, my role right now, but we have a great opportunity to make sure that we meet at least that first goal of what Doctor Cantones was talking about with enrollment, okay? So thank you very much for allowing us to be here. We'll open it up for any questions that you might have.
I would like some clarification. What Bernie just said, and I want to be real frank, and I want everybody to, I want everything over the table, and I have a very direct question. One of the things you mentioned, 1960, we didn't get any funding from 1960. We know that, and Eddie, it doesn't look like we're going to, right? I mean, it's dead. Okay. So the next question is, Bernie, you made a, you stated that you had been working, faculty and your staff had been working on the development of curriculum and courses for freshmen and sophomores, which is our downward expansion. Am I to understand that because of 1960s and its failure to provide more funds, that that process is hindered?
So we can't, we can't move forward because we don't have the, legally, we can't, the legislation hasn't passed, so we can't get those approved either through the board or through the coordinating board, through the, our board, Texas State University System Board, or through the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. So yes.
So basically, that, that means that, that there's no funding? Is that, is that a problem?
Well, I mean, HB 1960 was never about funding. HB 1960 was about making sure that we had downward expansion. So you've heard that word a lot. And again, for the elected officials, this is important, right? When you visit with your constituents, because I think that it's important to understand why, for example, Commissioners' Court or the City Council voted on a resolution to support HB 1960. The university cannot offer Years One and Years Two unless we have the legislature say, yes, you can, and bless them with that. That's what HB 1960 was going to do. Right now, Years One and Years Two are offered mostly by the junior college, and then they end up Year Three and Year Four at Sol Ross University. What we wanted to do is a, taking it, how do you eat an elephant? A bite at a time. We wanted to first make sure that we addressed and provided that downward expansion of offering Years One and Two, so that then we could get our numbers, our enrollment numbers up, so that we could meet the Texas State University enrollment numbers that they have shown us. Now, the reason why I'm saying that we're not stopping with respect to the first standalone building and the donation is because we already have those funds appropriated, and Sol Ross is already here, offering Years Three and Four. This bill, had it passed, would have made it easy now for our kids and everyone in the region, or even in the state or out of the state, to be able to enroll in a four-year university, starting Year One at, I guess, we'd first be calling it Sol Ross, but eventually it would have its own name, with its own mascot, our own colors and everything, as we first mentioned. And so I think that's very clear, since the mayor opened up for item number two. I was holding back on that, but now that we know, we have a good idea of what HB 1960 does. Now, I, I understand what Mr. Lipson's saying. Had we done that, and had we had the success of passing HB 1960, then that would have opened doors for us, funding opportunities for a four-year university from the state level to be able to be appropriated, higher-end funds, which we were, were unable to at this time, because HB 1960 did not pass. More than likely, if there's, we, we will ask the governor's office again, if in this third special session, since he's going to focus on, on public school finance and education, we're going to see if he would be amenable to having the same wording of HB 1960, but it's going to have a different number. And if it does, we're going to be scrambling, coming to you all, because remember, we only have 30 days during a special session, to ask you again to pass a resolution in support of it, so that we can get the support there at the legislature and get the votes to be able to pass it on, on both chambers.
Thank you, Representative. Mr. Barrera, I know that you, you had something that you wanted to say.
Yes, two things. One, just kind of a joke, but you asked what kind of water the best in the state that we give them, the students. But it was more of a question at this point, 1960, we know it didn't pass, but, you know, we can try to see if we can get it into a special, special session, or wait until two years from now to get it back on. But in the meantime, what do we do as a community to try to help out? I know the building is, there's monies already in it, and there's work to do, all the other stuff, but to try to bring up the numbers that we need to do, to start pushing these numbers, get more kids to be involved in, in, in Sol Ross, but also, we want to ask Sol Ross to also get more involved in the community, have more fairs, more things for kids to be, to know that you guys are there. So that's one of the things we really want to push. And what else do we have to do for us to help you all?
For Sol Ross, we've talked extensively about dual credit at our high schools. I believe we have, what, between 800 and 1,000 there? 1,100. If those were to, we've already talked about Sol Ross doing what they need to do and with, which is the other junior college you're talking about? Which one is it?
Lamar.
The other junior college?
Oh, not Lamar.
If we were able to do that, does that specifically, that doesn't count as enrollment, right? Not until, yes or no?
It doesn't. So the dual enrollment does count as enrollment, but...
Will it cancel our goal of enrollment?
Oh, no, it will not, because, well, let me just, so I guess I'll just reiterate what Representative Morris, what I'll just mention. So the campus in RDC cannot deliver intro classes, the core curriculum, right? All students going to college, they have to take the core curriculum. So they're not, they're not permitted by the state, and in their inventory of courses, they, they can't include, you know, introduction courses, like, for instance, Introduction to Criminal Justice. You can't deliver that from RDC. So when, that would have to be delivered from the inventory of courses from Alpine. So it would not count at this time.
But just to clarify something, since if we would get this part, well, we do have this partnership with Eagle Pass ISD now. The students are currently enrolled with Eagle Pass, but eventually, they will take about 35, 42 credit hours at the high school, which means that eventually, they move to the junior, senior level classes. So at that point, the transition would come to RDC. But the courses, if they are being offered as dual credit for freshmen and sophomores, it is going to be Alpine. But you understand the transition, if they come out from the high school, they go straight to us, if we can get 30, 40% of those students, that count will be for RDC.
Very important person that we have here today, Mr. Larry Levine, was gracious enough to donate the land where this university will be placed. Mr. Levine, would you like to address the crowd?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Let's get you a mic, just, just to hear even more.
Is that working? Yeah. Thank you for having us. I think, although everybody knows what HB 1960 is, I think maybe, for the benefit of everybody in the room, when I finish talking, maybe Eddie, you might kind of outline it real quickly to kind of let everybody understand the quick summary of what HB 1960, the actual, maybe a summary of the bill, and maybe the, the pitfalls where it might, you know, need to be worked on, the points to kind of get those resolved. But on a separate note, as they say, knowledge is golden. And this, we, we were excited about, when, when we were approached about giving this land, I was very excited about it. Eagle Pass is my hometown. When I graduated, there were 162 kids in our high school graduating class. And maybe you guys and girls don't remember, because we're a little bit older. Maybe Johnny does, and Morris, but I went to Texas A&amp;M, but I went there because our high school was on scholastic probation. So as a result, I had to go to summer school to be able to prove that I was capable to make it at Texas A&amp;M. If you look at what's going on in the world today, and you step back, whether it's the United States, or the Middle East, or over in Europe, or wherever else, we have a lot of problems. But to me, the crux of all those problems is the lack of education. And I think that people say, you know, they, they got to focus on education, but I think the truth of the matter is, in my opinion, for our kids and our grandkids, it's the most important thing. Me giving this land, it's not going to affect my lifestyle. It'll affect my daughter, and my kids, and my grandkids, and everybody else's kids and grandkids. So I feel like it's something that is needed. If you look at the state of Texas, and you look at Maverick County in this area, we're the only part of the state that doesn't really have a four-year university. You look at West Texas, you look at East Texas, you look at North Texas, South Texas, and we've done business, you know, I watched when Laredo, when you had the small junior college there, and Texas A&amp;M came in, and how that school has flourished. I don't know how many students. I think they have 35, 40,000 students now, something like that. And you look at down in the valley that we have projects, and I've watched the medical school and the colleges, how it has just been a real blossoming effect on that whole part of the state. And I think that I personally feel... part of the state, and I think that, I personally feel that everybody's going to get surprises the amount of enrollment that this school will get. I think that, when you look at all the cities and counties around here, it's nothing for them to drive 40, 50 miles a day to come to college, and I think that this education is vital. I think it, on an economic standpoint, it, when I went to Texas A&amp;M, we had 12,000 students, now there's 73,000 students, and I watch and see what that Texas A&amp;M has done to College Station, and I think the same thing. Eagle Pass has got all the factors that it needs, it's got a, it's got the border, it's got the industry, it's got a casino even, the only one in the state. Like it or not, it's, I think, an advantage. But I think the education is vital. You look at the professors that come to this school, that will be teaching here, and I think frankly, because of where we are, and because of the quality of life here, I think everybody will be surprised as to the amount of people that would want to come down here and work, because it's still close to a big city, but you've got a lower cost of living, and, hell, my parents came from New York City to Eagle Pass, and why did they do it? They went through Houston, because they came there because they felt it was a great place to live, and the quality of life, and to raise a family, and so, I think that the education is vital, and that we really, truly need to put that at the top of the list, because, you know, as I said, knowledge is golden, and if you got the knowledge, the higher the educate, the more education these kids less, the more education these kids get, the less crime, the more business, and the more economic factors you have, so that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. I think every organization here is committed to having this four-year university here in Eagle Pass as soon as possible. Our students, they deserve to have those options of having multiple degree options here in the region, and not having to travel. With that said, right now, what is the next step in making this first building?
To answer the Texas State University's request for being...
Yes. Yes. Okay. Right now, they need to know who's going to, the financing.
How much is being...
Okay. So, we have been provided a preliminary estimate, like you stated, of about 9 to 10 million, as a city council. We're currently exploring options, and I know I've spoken to the judge, and we do have a commitment to meet, to see how we can structure, make this possible. Am I correct, Judge?
Yes. No, you know, Mayor, obviously, in regards to the discussions that we've had, and for what we need to do to move this forward, I don't think that it's, it is something that, you know, obviously, every organization that's here wants to make sure that we move this venture forward with a four-year university. I think that, you know, it should go without, you know, be noted properly, that, you know, in this, and this is one of the biggest, obviously, concerns, because when we start looking at infrastructure needs and infrastructure costs, this was always, and it's something that I had even mentioned to Representative not too long ago over the phone, was one of the things as far as what the involvement that should have happened at a local level in the selection of that, to make that determination of what would have been most cost feasible to making sure that we could get this done. We're here now, we obviously need to adhere in making sure that the next steps are to get this project accomplished, and as we have pushed very hard for this university to take place here in this community, I believe that, you know, we need to find ways for us to find those ways of economic solutions. As entities, you know, 9, 10 million dollars is not something that can easily just say, here's the, here's the check, but there's definitely ways that we need to work towards that. Obviously, whether it comes down to the, whether it's a CO, or however else, you know, any entity might go at it, I know that we're going out for numbers of those, this go-round, just on water infrastructure alone, you know, we're going to be attacking certificates of obligations for those matters. But particularly to this instance, you know, I think the best step would be for us to consider, obviously, that meeting and moving forward. I don't know what type of a timeline we are set on, as far as having a determined date to come up with the solution for a finance plan of action for the infrastructure, but these are things, you know, that obviously, we need to know in order to proceed into the planning stages of our fiscal means of keeping our entities running smoothly as well. So, I don't know, the university system didn't provide, I don't believe there was a specific date, or was there?
I checked right now.
Okay.
We already gave it a timeline, Texas State University, for the building, and I think that, I mean, the original schedule was for opening for fall semester.
I think they, they had a timeline, I think for the building, I want to say, it was supposed to open the doors in the fall semester, so...
Good points by the judge, I agree with you. We have our finance director here, and as a city, we've been working on passing a balanced budget, so you're right, where it's not just like, hey, we have 10 million, let's do it, but this is a priority, obviously, we're all here just to discuss this item. Usually, we have these meetings, and we have on the agenda five or 10 items, but right now, we're just discussing the university, because it's that important to everybody. So, we are going to give it priority, to be as efficient as possible, to come up with a plan, so that we can present it as soon as possible, so that, if that's the next step, we can get it done.
And as far as from a state, you know, and federal perspective, I know obviously as well, Congressman Gonzalez is here, in reference to opportunities that are out there, and, you know, one of the good things that we did, obviously, here is, when discussing this, was that the funding mechanism for Loop 480 has been funded, from what has been informed to us for the last leg of 480. So, this obviously, I think, gives us an option for us to make sure that, you know, we can address is, where exactly it lands on the land parcel of what was donated, you know, has all of that been taken into consideration as well, and where we're looking on to, you know, to this plan of action or not? Anybody?
What I'm thinking of, and you're talking about the continuation of 480, that's the next leg of 480, because I know that eventually, the plan was to have this...
The land parcel was specifically adjacent to 480, from what I recall, was it not?
Excuse me?
The land parcel that was donated was adjacent to 480.
Well, the plan, and correct me if I'm wrong, you've already seen the preliminary drawings, was that there's one access coming off of 57, which would be the initial access, and then, as soon as 480 is continued, then there would be another outlet, ingress, egress to 480, is what, the way I envision it, somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
To be honest, I don't know the details of the plan.
Well, then, I think, you know, that the best thing, obviously, is for us to sit down and have those one-on-one meetings, there's no point in hashing that out here, but, you know, just as long as we can come up with those good plans of, and put them in place, for us to come up with that, I mean, if there are options for us to consider, the mostly, the greater savings, I think, more than anything, and on that matters.
There's a lot of specifics that we need to...
That we need to iron out, because I think right now, you know, just with what's been presented, and from what we've seen, it was still very preliminary, but, you know, we need to just continue pushing forward on it.
Representative, when you say that they need, the Texas State needs, what exactly, like a commitment, and the specific, any, anything in the specific?
The letter mentions, as Texas State University system is not in position to proceed with the construction of the new building without the financial support of the City of Eagle Pass and Maverick County to construct the roadways and the utilities needed to serve the new Sol Ross campus. We are requesting the city and the county's favorable consideration to enter into the site development agreement as soon as possible, so the plant project can proceed. It only says as soon as possible, no definitive date. And I have two different, there was an option one and an option two. I'm about to get clearance as to which option was the one that Mr. Levine and the Texas State University folks decided on, as far as the donation, so we can put it up there also, and ever for everyone to see.
Okay, great. Yeah, I would like to know the specifics as far as the timeline, that way we can make sure we get together and hash it out before the time.
They also tell me, Daniel Martin tells me, the request for qualifications for the architect will be issued before January, the end of January.
Okay.
That's for the building. So, we're constructing the building, we also, when the building is completed, we should have, we can act as part, to get...
You were saying that we can't start with the, you know, the 480 access first, and then give us more time to finance the access of the...
Larry, is this a land next to the 480? Is it adjacent to 480? So, we, part of the, part of it is kind of angles off, there were, actually, you gave them, you gave Texas State three options. One was, the 100 acres, basically, at the end of, I guess, the new road that we just put in, Eagle Pass, there's roughly 100, 110 acres there, and we gave them the option to locate the university, and we sat down with them, and we said, look, you've got, here are three options. You can split your 120 acres, your school, if we're less, if we're less roadways, because we're donating 100 acres, but we're also donating the road for the 100 acres, for the street, which is another 20 acres. So, we gave them the option, and said, look, if you want, we'll give you the 100 acres, plus or minus, at the end of the, of the new street that we just put in. They felt, looking out long term, that they want to have access to 480, and they felt that would be necessary because of all the students, they think they're going to get, you know, Rio and Art coming off of 277, they can hit 480 and come to the school. So, they said, no, we'd rather be close to 480, so we gave them two options, 480. One was, that's, when we did that, obviously, that's more than the street, but we gave them two options. One was, basically, where the street would die soon, by the student university. And then the other option, basically, to hold 120, 100 acres, to be one parcel, running to the street with access to 480. I don't know if any of that was...
There is already the place in set where it's going to be the university? Okay. Yeah, I guess, not everybody...
They've already, the site has been finalized, as a matter of fact, they've already come out, they gave a land plan.
Yeah. I think it would be fruitful to share that exact location with everybody, unless everybody already knows where it is. Mr. Mijares, we haven't heard from you, Mr. Mijares, do you have anything to add?
No, no. I was going to say something when, when, as the Soros, Soros was speaking, because we're currently working on migrating all our students. Hopefully, by a year or two, we have all our students with Sol Ross.
Okay.
Because we're, there were some little technicalities there, because of course, they can't offer first and second year courses here, but we are doing that MOU with Alpine, so we're working ourselves around that. But, the issue right now that we had were with the associate's degree, but I think that we are going to offer more of a four-year pathway, and then maybe we can do like a six-year credit hour ceremony, or something locally, because, you know, sometimes, you know, some parents still use associate's degree, and we really can't give the associate's degree, or Sol Ross can't give us an associate's degree, but we'll work, we'll be working on the technicalities, and finding a way where, I think it's going to be a win-win for everybody. I think that House Bill 1960 was essential in getting our numbers up, it's, I mean, Mr. Morales did a great job with that, getting our numbers up for, to meet the numbers with enrollment that Texas State is requiring, so I think everything's moving along. Other than that, I think that the city and, I mean, it's essential that we all work together, with the city and with Maverick County, so that we can make sure that we have an academic institution for all our students.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mijares.
Just so you know, yesterday at the meeting, I was very surprised at the details that this company went into, the topography of, you know, the, the topography of the land that was, in terms of the elevation, where exactly, like, you can put the parking lots, what kind of buildings would go where, whether the organization would be organic, or more sort of, you know, structured, in a kind of, you know, parallel fashion, but, and the different phases, and so, I... and, and the different phases, and, and so I, you know, they, they've done a lot of work already on that, on that master plan.
And that master plan takes into account where it's going to be? The, the land?
Yes, absolutely.
That right there-
I'd like to see that.
That plan, that picture is actually from yesterday's presentation, so it is very, very current.
Yeah, they were on the site, and they did all measurements.
Gotcha. Is that something that you could share with us individually? The, no, the presentation you saw yesterday?
I don't, I don't have it with me.
Yeah. Eventually?
Yes.
Yes, we'll send it to you.
Does anybody have any questions with respect to that, or? So you would have access to Loop 480 and then also that other road, from what I understand?
The goal, uh, is for the city to pick long term, uh, and that's what I think the school has gotten by, uh, once the university is open, if you've got traffic, uh, also connecting, this is the God watch, this is the city, you know, long term thing, to have connected to the Loop, veterans, to the 480, uh, and we would donate the property, the land, obviously, to the street, to the river, and on the other side of that property now, so that they would have, I think it connects to, uh, one of the streets, which is there later.
I mean, that, that's a prime location that has a lot of access points, so.
I feel like I'm back in school again. So the-
Get the microphone closer to you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So the original, uh, site we had proposed to them was right here. This is the street that we just put in, that stops right there. So we had proposed a hundred acres in this area right here. Uh, Saul Ross felt like that long-term, uh, that would not be as beneficial to giving them this land right here, because they would have access to 480. The utility trailer goes to right here, something like that. Uh, and so, when we sold the utility trailer, we did keep access to 480 for the rest of this property. The other option we had proposed to Saul Ross was giving them a hundred acres, something like this. And they felt that to develop and master plan their property, it'd be better having it all under, and all in one, one site for them to do as they need to internally, versus having a city street controlling their, 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 you know, their eventual layout. This street right here, if you blow it up, that connects to the Loop, or eventually it would. Our property stops right here. That's our property line along there. So, I think, I don't, I'm not sure if that's Chittam or whoever Kincaid, but, uh, their property, this goes here, and of course, the Loop, I guess, is somewhere right here. So, if and when the city had the ability to run a street to here, the university felt that would also be advantageous for them.
Right now, what is the specific infrastructure and road request to move forward?
What they need is, they need, right now, uh, we've got our water, water and sewer here, uh, and water all along the highway that we put in. And so their request would be to have, they need access, obviously, so it'd be to run that, that street. I think it's a hundred-foot wide street. It'd be paved, uh, with water and sewer and lighting, uh, this stretch, this stretch right here. And then I think once 480 opened, they would want this street here improved. Or probably, it would probably be to here, this stretch right here. So, if I'm not mistaken, the proposal that Terratech, uh, submitted, did in fact break it down to two different, uh, proposals. Uh, I think this was the initial one. Uh, and Morris, you could probably get with Javier and get a, get a, get him to verify that, but, Mayor, to your question, uh, to satisfy the university, it would have to be this street right here put in.
Okay.
To right there. That would enable them to develop this hundred acres. The, the, uh, and obviously, when 480's in, they'd want this put in too. But right now, it's just this, this street right here.
And I can, I can tell you from the presentation- From yesterday's presentation, all the entrances from the master plan would go, uh, go, go in through that road.
Right here?
No, the road that you-
Okay. Right here?
Yes.
All the way up here?
Yes.
Right.
All the entrances are there in that-
Right.
Gotcha.
It would be a good idea, I think, for the city to get a master plan of this whole project, or whatever presentation was given.
Yes.
So they can in fact understand the, the dynamics involved. But, uh, to the mayor's question, to get the university committed, uh, we have to put this street right here in.
A quick question, uh- Right now, that is county property, or, right?
It's in the county right now, yes, right?
And that, yes, and that was going to be my next question. Within all of this planning process, is there, and I don't know who to ask this question to, whether it's to, to Mr. Levine or to, to the university system, being that it's already gone through the donation process, is there going to be a voluntary annexation agreement that will be reached with the city in this case? Do we have that information? And I'm not just saying that just to throw it on you, Mayor.
We don't.
But I just want to know, what I want to know is, where are we on that planning? I mean, because I know that we saw that all too frequently on property that, that is raw, outside of, of, uh, city limits. Is there planning stages for that? I mean, there's, I just want to make sure that we're planning ahead.
I, I think that-
We, we, we don't have that information now, and that was a conversation that I was going to have.
As I understand-
For us to proceed, we need a-
As I understand, and I may be wrong, the frontage of all that and where utility is, is already annexed.
Well, that's, I was going to say, uh, we, the, the, I think it's, what is it? Eddie, uh, you might, in the first thousand feet along fifty-seven already-
Yes.
Right. Yeah. So the first thousand feet, uh, of the frontage is already in the city.
And another question, just, you may not know, but from those of you that have seen the master plan, the first building, the one that we already have funds for, uh, is, where would it be in relation to the donated property? I mean, uh, I, I see what, what the, the university's saying, they're going to say that anything within that campus, that of course would be built at the cost of, of the university. But, the, the first building, i- is it way back in the property, or is it up front?
Is that it, right there? Where, right here?
Okay.
Okay.
I, I, I agree with Mayor and the judge, I think it, it takes sitting down and analyzing what, uh, I think, the, I mean, well, you need the access road, I understand that.
Right.
I just think that it just needs to work out all the details as to what different options there are-
Of course.
For funding and everything else, to, to get this thing going and, and, and get access to the property.
Yeah. We have a city council meeting on Tuesday where we would like to discuss this, if we could get that presentation that, that you had yesterday?
Right.
So that we can review it. And to the county, of course.
Yes, Mayor, sorry.
And Judge, if they, I'm, I'm asking them if they could share the presentation that they received yesterday, where it's more specific, shows the building, so-
Oh, no, definitely.
We can get a better idea of where everything's going to be situated.
Is that basically a master plan of what y'all are considering for that?
Yes.
Yeah, it's talking about the four phases of the 10,000 students, includes, uh, touching like, sixteen buildings, you know, gym, residential halls, you know, the first phase is the first building, the second phase is like four different facilities, where you get to five thousand, so it's again tied to enrollment.
Right. Yes.
For those that are elected officials, I know that my state rep office and my, and my staff have been bugging you with sample letters that have gone out with respect to the support on Loop 480 since right now, for the UTP list that the Tex. dot Laredo district is considering, which we are part of the Tex. dot Laredo district. So it would really behoove us all, because you can see how we would benefit from finishing Loop 4, if we were to complete Loop 480 at state level, and have a secondary access point. So if you have not done so already, we would really implore you, you don't have to use our sample letter that we sent to, to all of you, but at least some version of it, or your own, but supporting Loop 480 so that we can, you all can submit it. The instructions were there in the, in that email to Tex. dot, so that they can understand how important it is to this community to have Loop 480 finished. The UTP list, eh, right now, it's the comment period that's open. I sat down during the port event, Mayor, if you recall, we sat down next to, or very close to the commissioners for Tex. dot. Mr. Commissioner New took notes, um, promised me that it would be number one on the list. I, I made a comment that we were number one on the list last year, and somehow we were taken off. He assured me that that was not going to happen this time and that the funding was there. But obviously, the more support from the community, the better. And so we've already, from the state rep's office, we've already sent that letter of, of support for that Loop 480, but I implore the Kikapu Casino, Eagle Pass Water Works, the Economic Alliance, the city and the county, to also do the same so that they can see that support.
I don't know, our representatives from the Kikapu tribe, if, if you have any comments that you'd like to add? I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I just, I just- Great.
Gotten, gotten sent as well. And then I think I just, on behalf of the tribe, Gabby and I will report back to the tribal council where everything is in the planning stage, talking about where, um, from the beginning, where the House Bill has, has kind of died, and what, what needs to be done as far as infrastructure and bring this to the council as well. And I think that Judge, um, brings up some solid points that in order for us to strategize with the council and talk more about, you know, the tribe's involvement and, and give them the information that they need for decision-making, and if there's any, um, grants or financial support or whatever it is that could be available on there, and I think some of the questions that you're asking are very pertinent to, to the tribe as well. So, we'll, we'll, we'll be sending back all, we're not the decision makers, we're the decision takers, right?
Yes.
So we'll go, we'll go and take this information back.
We appreciate you being here and appreciate the tribe being a partner with Maverick County and the City of Eagle Pass, our school district. Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry, and I was typing, so I may have, I may not have listened, but i- is the Kikapu also interested in the possibility of, I'm sorry that I'm putting you on the spot, maybe this is not a decision, you can may, of also participating with the city and the county on the infrastructure costs, is that something?
No, 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 we just said we would send back the information. We definitely are not the decision makers, we're the decision takers. So we'll be taking all this back to the council.
Is it something that you can take back and see if there is, um, appetite for some sort of investment, and may not have to be in the equal amounts, but, um, I think the next, it would be helpful, and I've sent to Carlos, Carlos, do you want to put up the cost estimate so that people understand that also, or the screen? And, and, and we will make this available to you all also.
Great, we'll send the information back to the council and, and give them this information with the presentation.
Let me, let me state that another way, because I, I know for a fact that, that the tribe council has been looking at possible investments in the community and in, and in other endeavors. So, you know, this area that's, and other areas that are going to develop in Maverick County and Eagle Pass would be really prime for, for a good investment for, for the tribe. You know, it, I'm not, we're not, I'm not necessarily talking about the road infrastructure, I'm talking about other, other endeavors and, and other things that the tribe, I know, has been looking at to, so as to speak, to put back into the community as, as actually a business venture. So, something that you might take back and, and mention, that there's an excellent opportunity in where our growth oppor-, uh, growth areas are going to be.
We absolutely will, we've both been taking minutes on our phone as we've been here, and we'll be sharing all of this information.
No, and, and really, it's part of our unity, we're really glad that you're here, that, that, and we appreciate it very much that you're, you're, the, take it back, please, to, to Chairman, that, that we're really pleased and appreciative of you, you know, being part of our unity here.
On behalf of the tribe, we're, we're grateful for the invite and the seat at the table, and we'll send the information back to council, definitely.
And I'll just reiterate that, Ms. Jaffar as well, and of course, Gabby, to all that you all are doing. I think yes, uh, just yesterday, we had had a very productive conversation with the tribe in regards to a lot of projects specifically here in, in Maverick County that were pertinent, pertinent to, uh, tribal affairs and, and what is ongoing. I don't speak for the tribe, but nonetheless, the one thing that I can tell you is that there's a great ability to work together, uh, in order to make sure that we're all moving in the same, uh, direct, direction cohesively. With those options being provided, I think that just as long as all the information's given, uh, we can definitely expand upon that and see what, uh, what we can do. So, express our thanks once again to, to the, uh, to the council for your all's participation, and we look forward to that continued partnership amongst all of us.
Mary? Yes, sir. We can hear you.
But I do think it would be very beneficial for the land plan to go, uh, to sit down with the city, because I think the city is at a disadvantage and they're not going to understand it, but-
And the county, also.
Yes. Yes. Exactly. Larry, I think you hit the nail on the head.
No, I understand. The master plan is not complete, but I think at least, we all know play it safe. You know, we still talk, we're, we're working on one right now in college state. We're on 42nd, you know, reiteration of it. I understand, but we don't, like, everybody knows we're decided now. And to be able to let the county and the city know what's going on and what needs to be done and the timing and everything else.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
And the capacity, the, the board is there. You can't, you can't size, you're limited to one building. You gotta see how many buildings you can have at a hundred acres. That was the issue we were dealing with when we did our donation. It was, it's done. But what is, you're speaking out loud, one of the, one of the major hurdles is that I wanted to go, like, just, look, we're gonna give a hundred acres to the university. But we're not giving you a hundred acres if you're just gonna build one building and not build on the other ninety of them. We need to know that you guys have a plan and a commitment to build a four universities here that in fact does fill up that land. Because otherwise, we're all sitting here, you know, late in our time. So I think that master plan, it is just preliminary stage.
Yes. Our engineer needs, needs to know specifics. How can we set that up, Brittany?
Well, I have already had a conversation with Carlos, our president, just now.
Perfect.
And he is working on something. As soon as we walk out of here, I will have this conversation, make sure that we call you or call Morris or...
And the judge.
Call Judge. And we'll figure it out.
Excellent. All right. Yes, extremely. This is a, a very helpful meeting, like Larry said, because we get an overall sense. I have a feeling a lot of people hadn't even seen this, this site right here and now we have a better idea of what we're working with. So with that said, anybody else that wishes to speak on this matter? I think as a city, we know what we have to do next. And Judge, anything from you?
I do extend, of course, our thanks to the city for the ability to coordinate the meeting, uh, today. And I think that, you know, we, we will have our, uh, sessions that will be coming up on the thirty-first. We have our next commissioners' court meeting. There'll be some additional items that'll be placed just to have an, a discussion amongst the court and to take the next steps as far as what we'll be doing, as far as the meetings that are to be set up and, uh, what these next, uh, weeks, months will be at as far as where we're, where we're going.
Thank you, Judge. Always appreciate your partnership and the commissioners. Thank you so much. Thank you. If, if, if we could set that up with the three entities, that would be great. Thank you very much. Well, we, we thank everybody for being here at the table discussing this. Very important for, for the community, for Maverick County, for the city of Eagle Pass. If nobody has anything else to, to add at this time from the city council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion? Do adjourn? We have, okay. We have a motion to adjourn by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, second. Councilman Garcia, all in favor? Unanimous, the city is adjourned. County?
I do apologize, but I just have two items that I need to take on. They're very quick. Shouldn't take up, but it's, uh, we could just briefly, commissioners, on items, uh, one and two, there will be no action that will be taken at this, as of this time. Um, item three, accounts payable, is there a motion to approve? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese. Discussion, being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number four, warrants pending. Uh, is there a motion to approve? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion, being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios. Second by Commissioner Ramos. Discussion, being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Court is adjourned.
All right. Mayor? Mr. Johnny? Yes.
City Eagle Pass Water Works System, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, no further discussion. Adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.